Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 27th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. Could we first please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First, we have some correspondence. I think both were from the Conservation Board. Anybody want to discuss or talk about what we see here?
I think it's all relevant to items on the agenda, so uh...
Yeah.
Bring it up later.
Yep, sounds like a good plan. Next, we have the meeting minutes of March 13th, 2023. Any issues, concerns, comments, corrections?
Good.
Motion, Jim.
Oh, hang on one sec. Anything, John?
I have nothing now.
Counselor?
Nothing.
Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second?
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into the regular portion of the meeting. First, we have, uh, Crystal Court subdivision. This is a decision statement. Anybody?
I think this is just a reapproval.
Yeah. Who was the pan bar?
Yeah.
Extension.
Yeah.
We're extending everything, right?
Nothing's changed, I presume.
What is the will of the board?
You want to put him off until he comes, or you want to vote?
Want to wait till later? Go back in? Alright, we'll go back. Okay, so we're going to table that. Uh, we'll move into the work session. So I have a motion to move into the work session.
Motion.
Second?
All's in favor.
Aye.
First, on the work session, we have the Arrowhead subdivision. Lot 6.3. This is a discussion of the site plan. And there you are.
And there I am. Ralph Perrigen, DTS Providence Design Engineer. Um, here tonight representing Isak Gashi for the lot 6.3 subdivision. We recently, uh, just to give you a heads up, I mean, uh, bring you up to date on where we're at. We've received, uh, County Health Department approval two weeks ago. And we received the ARB's, uh, concurrence with the plan la- I think it was last, their last meeting. So, right now, we're seeking, uh, site plan approval for this lot as required by the overall subdivision resolution for this project, which requires, uh, site plan approval for each and every lot in this subdivision. Uh, what we've done is sighted the building in the same location that previously was, uh, where it was on the approved subdivision, you know, within, uh, pretty close to it. Uh, the elevation of the building has been somewhat adjusted because we felt that it would, it worked better with the existing topography and we ended up with a couple of small retaining walls, front and rear, uh, with a max of about six foot height. Uh, the retaining walls would be, uh, some type of modular block and we're leaving that to the owner to decide if he wa- how he wants to handle that as far as, uh, materials. That's, um... And their stormwater management on this was, uh, already accounted for in the major subdivision, so there's really no need for additional stormwater management measures. I'll be happy to address any questions.
Anybody from the, excuse me, board have any concerns? Questions?
No need.
Nope?
No need.
Aaron?
Why was this, why was approval of individual lots reserved on this? Any specific reasons or things that we needed to consider?
Uh, this property has significant grade issues.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's the stormwater issues as well, although they, they're, you know, it has a SWIP, which was then expanded by the DEP significantly. Uh, there is open space up on the, on the south going up the slope to Turkey Mountain. So there was a lot of issues. And so the board wanted to make sure that when the, uh, final and detailed design was laid out and set ready for building permit and construction, that it was still well in keeping with the original approval of the board. And also, anytime there's a two-foot, uh, change in any first floor elevation, you get it in.
And we did had a, we did modify the first floor elevation here a little bit, only because, again, this particular lot, we felt that with that elevation, it fit into the topography much better than the, uh, the elevation that was on the original subdivision plot.
So how different, how different are you in the elevation?
I can't read those.
Five eighty-eight.
Five eighty-eight, that's, uh...
Five ninety-two.
Five, uh, five ninety-two, I think it was. So we've lowered it somewhat.
By about four feet.
Yes, but again, it, if we had put it at that original elevation, we would have had, uh, eight to ten foot high walls at the front of the building, so...
So does this in any way run afoul of the, or raise any red flags on any of the issues you just identified, John? Or is this in keeping with the overall goals of this subdivision on this lot?
The general layout seems to be in keeping with the original.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the only thing that you might want to ask is whether or not the, is there any significant additional impervious surfaces that have been created by this, or?
Not based on the original calculations. We're within, you know, a few percent of what it was.
Okay. And, and the footprint of the home is probably similar to what the original footprint was showing?
Yes.
Seems to be in keeping with it, I think. I wouldn't expect any significant, uh, modifications in the grading from the original plan. Given that all of those things are close to what they were and that the general layout and location are in much the same place as they were originally.
And the septic field is in the exact same location as was approved.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Nope. John?
That's all.
John, I see there's a, if I'm looking at it correctly, there's a lot that's associated to the rec department? As part of the original subdivision, uh, approval, is that still in there?
Turkey Mountain property?
I don't know, it looks like there's an easement there and it says that it was given to the rec department. It may be old news.
Yes, there was an easement. Uh, and there's also, there was land that was taken in Lou, um, there was land that was taken and donated for parks and rec purposes, which was appended to Turkey Mountain Park.
Okay.
The conservation easement comes from, in the Turkey Mountain plan, there was a a policy to prevent development over a certain elevation.
Mm-hmm.
And that is reflective of that.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Anything?
I'm good.
Jim?
Nothing from me.
Alright, there was a resolution approved. Does everybody taking a look at that?
Where do we got that?
It's okay.
It's okay? Any comments about this?
No.
Good, good. Pretty alright?
I'm good.
Have you had a chance to take a look at this?
I haven't seen it. Is this the one you're talking about?
Go back into the regular portion of the meeting, or you can do it, that's for you. We got the other guy back too.
Is this the one you're talking about?
No, no. Alright, we got it. Alright, I also see our first applicant here. Showed up a little bit late. He's not wearing a watch, it's fine. Uh, I'm going to make a motion to go back into the regular portion of the meeting. So move.
Second?
All's in favor.
Aye.
Alright, so we have a resolution in front of us approving a site plan, stormwater pollution prevention plan, and finished floor elevation for lot 6.3 of the Arrowhead subdivision. We have a motion.
Motion.
Second?
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All set.
Have a good night.
Mitch, I just wanted to say, I, I noticed that the old resolution was signed by Robin Steinerger, who used to be a member of the board, who's since passed. So I just wanted to remember her.
Okay.
I was on the board with her when I was last on his board, she was a fine lady.
I, I saw that.
Spent thousands and thousands of hours working for this town on the board and otherwise.
Really?
Absolutely. So, just want to remember her.
Absolutely, especially, you know, someone who volunteered that much time.
Absolutely.
It goes quick.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Alright, uh, I'm going to go back to number, uh, three.
Number one.
Well, one, you have a, a three.
Three.
Is anybody here from number three? Crystal Court subdivision? Oh, here he is. He wanted to put you last.
I know. Sorry, my partner put me in the calendar for last week, so it didn't ring. I didn't know I was supposed to be here.
So this is for, uh, an extension?
Yes.
Anything you want to talk about, or?
There's, I don't think there's anything to talk about, I just want to extend it. Um, we're finalized, we went to DEP. I think we're real close to finishing with everybody and we can get started on this.
So you've been working with DEP?
Yes.
And that's kind of why you're...
That's why we need the extension, it took a little time to get through there.
Got it.
Yeah.
Alright, let me just get my bearings straight here. Anybody from the board have any questions?
Nope.
No.
John?
Nothing here.
I can't find it, I can't see it. For the original. Did I pull it out?
Need it, I got it here.
You got it? Alright, so we're looking for an extension of the resolution approving a subdivision plat, wetland permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan, and tree permit for Crystal Court. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
All's in favor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Take care. Do I have a motion to go back into the, uh, work session portion of the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
All's in favor.
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have, uh, Tully, formerly known as Sandvoss Minor Subdivision. This is a discussion of the site plan, locations 1005 Hanover Street. How you doing?
Hello, everybody.
Hey, Joe.
Um... With me tonight are the Tullys, Brendan and Kelly, and...
Hi, Russell and Avon.
Avon.
Thank you.
So, so the, uh, the Tullys, um, bought the property that was previously known as the Sandvoss subdivision, which I'll just give you a little refresher on that. This is the, uh... This was the Sandvoss subdivision, so it's, there was an existing lot, which is this lot right here, that fronts on Hanover Street, and then we were creating three new lots out of one parcel that was thirteen point eight acres. Um, so that required constructing a private road, um, that extends from the frontage across, we had, uh, two stream crossings to get across to the back two lots, uh, which, um, are shown on the left side of the sheet. And then towards the front, in this area here, was a third lot. So the Tullys, as I stated, the Tullys have purchased the property and they are interested in only developing it as a single site. So they were abandoning the subdivision, the existing lot that's on Hanover Street still remains. And it'll be constructing one of the houses that were towards the back of the property. So, from an impact perspective, this is significantly less. We still have the two stream crossings, the, the width of the driveway has been reduced. So it's no longer as loo- as large of an impact to construct a driveway. As you can see, at the far end, we, we're maintaining a turnaround and maintaining a turnaround there for fire, uh, fire trucks. Uh, that's going to be a grass paver area. So that would not be, that would, uh, not be improved with any kind of, um, pervious or impervious surface. The driveway itself is going to be gravel almost in its entire length. From stormwater perspective, everything is relatively the same. Of course, we have less stormwater management facilities because we have less improvements. The septic system for the house, as you can see, is at the, uh, above the house where we're showing the house location now. Um, the house is almost in the identical location that was approved in the subdivision. And we are just adding, uh, a pool in the back of that, in the, in the rear of the residence. So overall, this is a, a reduction of what was originally approved as part of the subdivision. But what we're asking for is the, is to amend the wetland permit that was originally granted. Renew it. And I guess it would be, in a sense, um, a new permit, let's say. But it's, um, a lesser permit than what was originally granted, uh, as part of the subdivision process.
Pretty straightforward.
Where, how did you end up with DEP on this?
Um, I, I'm not going, I'm, I wasn't planning on going back to DEP.
But how far did you get on the original?
Oh, no, we, we had full SWIP approval for that.
Yeah, full SWIP approval.
Yeah.
So... Are you saying that the disturbance here does not rise to a DEP permit? Or you're just going to, it'll construct it under this original SWIP?
I'm going to construct it under the original SWIP, correct.
DEP will allow you to do that?
Right, because we're not in, we're, we're not increased, if anything, we're, we're... I, I, I would imagine at some point, I will let them know, but I, I don't want to introduce them into the process when it's not necessary for them to be in there, since we already have a, a permit from them.
Did you evaluate the limited disturbance amounts and the tree removal amounts comparatively?
Yeah, comparatively, it's, it's, of course, significantly less.
Right.
Yes, we...
But is it quantified at all?
Didn't quantify the tree removal, but I definitely quantified, um, the, the wetland disturbance and, and buffer disturbance.
Okay. And, um... And what, what's your, what are you hoping to, to do? I, I know I'm asking you to repeat yourself, but...
Yeah, we just need to what, we... We need a, a wetland permit for the proposal. And I don't know if you want to treat it as an amended wetland permit or just a brand new wetland permit, but, we already had a wetland permit granted as part of the subdivision and we are within the footprints, clearly we are within the footprint, so we're not changing anything, we have not gone anywhere outside the footprint of what was originally approved. So, um, in my mind, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, this is, this is about as, as simple as you can get.
Yeah, I don't know why we're doing it.
It's a procedural question as to...
Yeah.
How do we do this to document it?
Yeah.
And one, one other question. So your wetland permit and your tree, anything that you had approved was approved by resolution?
Yes.
But you did not advance to where you had the plat signed and filed?
That's correct.
No, no type of construction permit was ever finalized?
That's correct.
Whether it being wetland or tree or anything, right?
Only that, that was granted as part of the, part of the resolution.
As part of the resolution.
Right.
I think it would be some type of an amendment.
What's the simplest way to go about it, you think?
Well, the amendment, I think, would abandon the subdivision. The, the three lots and amend the permits to reflect the plans that Joe has provided. Uh, we'll have to go through the tree stuff and and claw back what the mitigation would be? You know what those numbers are? That, that's my, that's my sense right now. I, I'd like to get a little bit further, you know, thought on it to make sure that we're
Right.
proceeding properly. It, it should be, you, you're right, it should be a, a simple thing to think about, but it is, I think, as, as Bob has put forth, uh, making sure that the procedure that we use is the proper procedure.
Right, you got to make sure that a few years down the road when you're in your house...
My recollection was, we were not proposing any mitig- tree mitigation as part of the
Okay.
of the original subdivision and, and the planning board was accepting of the fact at that time that we did our best to minimize disturbance and then as a result of that, we would have had to take some trees down. So I don't think we, uh, during the subdivision process, we did any tree mitigation.
Okay. Alright, well...
If, if there's no more subdivision, do we still have jurisdiction over this type of an application?
Well, that's what I want, that's what I would hope to look into and, uh, you don't, you, you're not, you know you're not getting a, a, a resolution tonight, right?
I, I was just hoping to get, uh, a, a good...
Some path?
Yeah, a good, a good path.
I would like in the next couple of weeks to, you know, figure out that.
Yeah.
And find the, you know, the best path for you. Uh, and answer those questions.
So I think on the behalf of the board, this is a no-brainer.
Yeah.
So we just got to make sure that the Ts are crossed and the Is dotted, so that there's, there's no issues. So I would say work closely with, with, uh,
Okay.
John and Robin.
Maybe we could, uh, by the next meeting, have this, uh...
I would sit down and, you know,
Yeah.
hash out the details.
Okay.
Alright?
Good.
I was looking, this, when this started, I think my daughters were about Aiden's age.
Two thousand and five.
Huh?
Two thousand and five.
They're all in college now, so...
Goes back.
Yeah, goes back, like we just said, time flies.
Alright, so you worked out with John and Robin?
Yep, we'll do it.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Alright.
Good luck, Dan.
Thank you.
Oh, this thing's giving me a hard time tonight.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have MJM Land Development. This is a discussion of a major subdivision, locations 3232 Gomer Street.
Hello?
How are you?
Okay, good. So, um... Couple months back, I guess it was, we did a site walk with, with all of you, we went after the site. Um, and we were looking at that, at the plan that's here before you now, and that's a conventional layout. We were coming off of, uh, London Road, uh, straight in on an existing town right of way. And then we were, uh, once in the property, splitting left and right to access, um, a total of thirteen lots, seven on, on the, uh, Gomer Street side and six lots on the Cordial roadside. So, uh, as part of that, we were, we needed, uh, to cross the wetland, which runs down the center of the site. And, um, what we discussed at that time and subsequent to that was coming up with an alternative, coming in off of Gomer Street and off of Cordial and not, um, crossing through the wetland. So we prepared this version and, uh, it works out very nicely. We come in off of Gomer Street, we've got seven homes off that side there. You can see the termination of the cul-de-sac is right at the edge of the, uh, hundred-foot buffer. And we've got, uh, seven lots here that conform to zoning. Uh, our second access is off of Cordial. And again, you could see we're coming in across that forty-foot frontage that we have and again terminating in the cul-de-sac. And we're, we, we have six, uh, conforming lots on that side. So, the issue still remains as to how not having a fifty-foot access point, you know, at, at this pinch point right here, we still don't have fifty feet there. Um, the, the property owners have contacted and met with the property owners on Cordial. Uh, there's, there's no cooperation there, uh, as far as gaining any piece of property, even though there was a willingness for, to possibly, you know, give, give some of that land that's remaining to that lot, maybe get, let them reclaim some of that big wide right of way that's there. And on the other side, on, on this side here, um, there was no interest there either. So we still have that pinch point. Uh, so the, the, the only way we, well, we could possibly address that, if we can't get the ten feet that we needed, is to do a flexibility subdivision here. We've, we've proven on the last plan that we can, uh, zoning-wise meet the thirteen lot count under the regu- under the current regulations, the, um, the zoning regulations. So we could, the planning board can request to the town board that we do a flexibility subdivision, which will allow us to, um, not have to worry about the fifty-foot right of way on that approach. It'll also allow us to be a little more flexible in the size of the lots, where we can even, um, pull a little further away from the wetlands and buffers on, on the remain, on the lots that border those, those, uh, those locations. So, um... This, that's what's before you now and...
So are you saying flexibility will give us the ability to, to consider this plan without a fifty-foot right of way?
It...
And use the existing forty-foot?
It, it would. And it would also allow you to modify, modify the bulk standards where we could...
So we just have some other flexibility as a result?
Where you have some other flexibility, you don't have, they don't have to be twenty thousand square foot lots. If you want to vary the frontage, vary the setbacks, you can do, you can do that.
I, I got to say, when we did the site walk, um, you know, we go on a lot of site walks. This one was probably one of the most valuable.
Yes.
And I, you know, when we went into that middle area there where the connection was, you know, I, I think we were all kind of taken back. I myself think this is a much better plan than the original, um, to protect that middle area. And the area to the other side, when we walked up, we saw the raccoon during the day. That was clearly, a lot of that was piped in from town infrastructure. Not that that doesn't make it a wet area, but it is a created area. I, I don't know what the other members of the board think, but I'm certainly in favor with going to...
I think we should.
The town board.
Go with the flexibility request. Because that'll assuage, you know, that'll deal with a lot of the issues in the neighborhood. It'll limit the impacts to the surrounding properties to the south and, um, make, I think it'll make it for a better project.
Did get a lot of, uh, letters, by the way.
And, and just, just so you realize that, um, that the, the roadway coming off of Cordial, we would, that would have to be a, a private road, but we would build it to town standards. We would give the fifty-foot right of way, the, the roadway itself would be built to town standards. However, it would have to remain pu- private, unless, Jim, you have another interpretation of that, but...
Why do you think, under what situation do you think it, that one line, that imaginary line that's forty feet is against the code?
That's always been my understanding, that, that that's, that's a state code? That you have to have a, for it to be a public right of way, it has to be fifty feet? But I could be mistaken.
I'll, I'll look into that because it's a, it's an interesting question. But in the meantime, I think the board should request the flexibility, uh, from the town board anyway. But if we can solve that problem without, um, without flexibility, that's fine. That'll probably speed up your process.
Okay.
Joe, what is the threshold that would then make it a private road? Is it just the lack of that fifty foot?
Yes, that's, that's, that's what I'm going by, that, it would be that lack of fifty foot. But I could, I, I could be wrong, that's always been my belief or my understanding, that, that you had to have a fifty-foot right of way for it to be public road.
Alright. So if we get that answer and it's to what, to our liking, we could always go back to that?
You could.
Okay.
Did we get your flags, uh, verified?
No, we haven't gotten to that. I, I mean, if you want, if you want to...
Get that started as well?
Yeah, if you want to get that started, that'd be great.
Please. Please. And an evaluation of at least the, the back wetland since you'll be in the buffer?
Yeah.
Get a sense of what that is.
Joe, could you just go back to the, the original plan just for a minute?
Probably should.
It's coming off, coming off, what, London?
It was that, that whole middle area.
Yeah.
We went off.
Yeah, we're all four of you on the plan that, that, that looks nice there.
From what I see, Joe, you can probably pull back the cul-de-sacs a little bit as well, right? Even without clustering? Excuse me, flexibility?
Yeah, I don't know if I can, John. I. I, I mean, you know, we could, we could massage that a little bit. And, and see, but. As you could see, like the first, if you take, if you take the lots coming in off of Gomer Street.
Yep.
The first five lots, the ones that are not on the cul-de-sac, we're like right there with the lot area. Now clearly, if we do the flexibility, that changes everything. Then we can, you know, we could make the lots eighteen thousand square feet, fifteen thousand square feet and pull everything forward.
Yeah, but, yeah. Just needs, on the cul-de-sacs, you just need the sixty foot frontage, so.
Yeah, and it's, and it's not that. It's ki- it's kinda like, so I started at Gomer Street. And worked my way in and those lots are like right, right at the area.
In the lot size, right, yeah.
But this plan, you've got, all the roadways are out of the wetland and controlled areas.
Um, no, not, not coming in off of Cordial, we're in the, we're in the control area.
Oh, control area on that side, yes, I'm sorry. But I mean, you're out of the wetland completely.
Right, right.
So should we, do we draw a, a resolution at some point to go back to the town board? How does that work?
It's a, it's just a simple consensus vote and then we write a memo that you approve. That requests the flexibility.
Alright, so we do, do we have a motion to ask the town board for flexibility standards on the MJM land development?
Motion.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have home and heart. This is a discussion of a site plan. Locations one seven five zero East Main Street. I have to recuse myself on this.
Yep. Been a while since we've been before you. We were waiting for things to get ironed out. We needed to go to Abaca and. And we were waiting for the applicant to, to. Get the renderings done that, that were needed. We were also dealing with the town wetland consultant, Steve Marino's here and he'll just give you a brief update on where that's at. And we're, we're looking to move forward at this point and get the project. Out to a public hearing. We've already had a P I H. The plan, the site plan itself hasn't changed from what you had seen just about a year ago. So there's no, there's no difference in the site plan. We believe we've addressed all the issues that were brought up at that time. Steve's mitigation plan is, and I'll let him just bring you up to date on that, but Steve's mitigation plan. Is, is being processed. So the elevation, the renderings that the. That the applicant had done. So on the left side, you have the, the main front building. So the top. View is the, the front entrance and that's, that's fa- it's actually facing the sideline or it's facing east. The lower rendering is the end that faces Route Six. And then the. This rendering here is the storage building that's proposed for the back of the set. We've also had a lighting plan done and a landscape plan, which is contained within this, within the set. Is the landscape plan done by Abigail Adams. And we also have a lighting plan. That's been completed also. So as I said, the only thing that's remaining at this point is for us to move forward, is to get, get a public hearing going. And I'll let Steve just give you a quick update on the, on the wetlands.
Good evening, Steve Marino. Two aspects to this regarding the wetlands is the town wetlands portion of it. We have received a report back from the town's consultant. Johanna Duffy, she has been out to the site, confirmed the wetland delineation, the line on the property and has reviewed, a preliminary review of the mitigation plan. And other than a couple of minor adjustments to the plant list and, and a set of details on the mitigation plan, it's my reading that. She sees this as a reasonable redevelopment of the property and not impacting of the wetlands overall. It's also a D E C wetland, as you know, we're currently before the D E C, waiting for them to get back to us with comments on, on our submission as well. When we did the site walk with the D E C, they didn't, again, a redevelopment of an already developed, highly developed property. They didn't have any substantial issues in the field with the, with the plan. We're just waiting to get their written feedback back from them and to finalize the D E C permit.
Brief from the board, have any questions?
No.
Good. John?
The. Lighting plan, it looks as though you're using. A non-shielded or a non-ninety degree lighting head there, or am I misinterpreting that?
What's this one here, John?
Yeah. Uh, no, the one below.
Floodlight.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Alright, so that's ju- that's just a point we could take a look at.
Yeah, we could take a look at that.
Much about it.
Yeah.
And then the, just a, just a quick comment for your consideration really is the facade that faces this, the street, you have. A kind of a large field of the board and baton siding that maybe is. To place some other feature, maybe some high windows, several squares of windows, you know, just to engage that a little bit more. Just a suggestion.
Okay.
I think it's a, a simple, nice, nice building and the materials look. Nice as well, so, but. That's the only thing I noticed on it.
Okay. Yeah, we've been to Abaca on this. They, they wanted us to come back just to look, look at some minor.
Yeah.
Minor things.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's nice, I'll, I'll say it's a little out of character with Mohegan commercial area, but I still think it's a nice piece itself. In and of itself, but. That's, that's all I have at, at present.
Okay.
Joe, I have a question. What's the sidewalk situation over there?
As far as.
In front of the property and immediately to, you know, either side?
Yeah, we're, we're showing a, a new sidewalk.
New sidewalk, okay. Cause I noticed, I just saw Westchester's comments and.
You know, we, we're showing a new sidewalk in the front.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, right here and here. We're connecting to the existing.
Okay.
Counselor?
No, I think you're probably ready for a public hearing.
Alright, so you wanna set a public hearing? Twenty-third? Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Gardenia Hotel. This is a discussion of site plan and special use permit. Location is one nine five two Commerce Street. You're not gonna leave that podium tonight, are you, Joe?
Huh?
Right?
Alright gentlemen, good evening.
How are you?
Good evening.
Uh, just to bring you back up to speed, we had this, we scheduled this meeting basically to go over the architectural treatment of the building. And there's been some meetings in the interim over the architectural treatment of the building. We're hoping that. I know there was a lot of enthusiasm for the project and, and I'm hoping that, my desire is really for this board to really own this project. I think it's gonna be, it's an exciting project in town and rather than, in the past often that the, there's a lot of deference to the. To the advisory boards and we appreciate that, but we think that this is a project that we all, you know, we're hoping that this board will embrace. And. So I'm gonna let Joe take over to go through the iterations and then we're gonna do some of the materials. Probably get. Some tweaking, some, some of your ideas, your feedback, because I believe we're scheduled for April. The first meeting in April, right on the Monday, as the second Monday in April for a public hearing?
The tenth.
Tenth. So hoping to, for some. Enlightened feedback.
So, just to bring you through a little bit of history on this, and the material boards never showed up.
Oh, did you?
No, so, we don't have material boards, but I'll describe it the best I can. Okay. So this, this was the initial concept that was done over a year ago, that you saw al- almost two years ago. The overall shape of the building really hasn't changed. And as, as you can see, the main focus of this was brick. On the main tower where the front entrance is, you had stucco and the brick carried around. Around this, the. Cafe area and up the clock tower. Give you another view of that, let's see what that's from. Again, this is, this was that initial rendition. And we kinda in a way circled back and came back to this. But with a little change in the materials. So the. So this is what, what was presented to you the last meeting. And what, and that was presented to the. Architecture review board. Most of the comments we got, there was too much going on as far as materials, too many materials, too many colors. So last week, we sat down with John and Robin a couple of times and came up with. What we're going at with as our last rendition of what the project we hope for it to look like. So this is. This is the view of the project. As you can see, we've. Get, gotten rid of the stucco. It's mostly brick. These areas in here are limestone finish. It's not a stucco. And we've brought in a stone base around the building. There are some limestone. Features. That go around the building to define some of the breaks in the materials. They're like lint, would you call them lintels, John, or?
Yeah.
Yep, lintels, right? We eliminated. The brick, what do you call these again, John? Sorry.
Coins.
Coins. I couldn't, I just couldn't, I couldn't get it out. The brick coins on the main tower and also as you'll see on the, on the clock tower. So, and we've got two views. We've got a daylight view and then we've got a nighttime view.
So nice.
Of how it's gonna look.
That is just fantastic. Oh my god, that is so nice.
So we're gonna, you know, work our way around and show you how it's gonna look.
Oh god, that's incredible.
With the Commerce Building.
This is, this is, again, this is looking at, at the corner, right? So you, you can see how we brought the stone up and then we've got the limestone lintel. Going around, you can see we, we removed the coins off the clock tower. Portion of the site. Again.
Beautiful. Really is.
Joe, what's the finish over the entrance on Commerce Street?
So the entrance, this is gonna be limestone. It's, it's, it's got a fluted look, but it's actually, you know, a series of curves that just. That just curve into each other. But it's, it's gonna be a limestone finish. You know, it accentuates the main entrance. And this, this protrudes out. You know, at, at the next meeting, I'll have the, the architect. Explain it in more detail. He'll give you the, the full lowdown on everything, but I'm doing my best to, to explain it.
Joe, the, the main hip roof, is that copper? It was copper before?
No, it, it, it's going to be a seam.
Standing seams?
Standing seam, flat metal roof, yeah. Not flat, but pitch roof.
And what, the, the green section in the daylight version?
That's a, it's gotta, it's gonna have a, a patina copper.
Right, so just that, just that tower?
Just the tower.
And there's a.
And, and.
And there's a, over the, yeah, and I thought there was a part where the signage is.
We, yeah, we eliminated that.
Okay.
So this is the only location where you're gonna have that patina copper, copper look.
Okay.
So this is the, this is what we're going with. We think it looks pretty sharp. It's gonna be, I think, a real asset to Commerce Street and to the downtown. The, unfortunately, as you could see, the, the color of the brick kinda changes. It's more of a reddish. Brick, but with, it's so hard to render and get the exact color. You know, you could print this using three different printers and it'll come out. Three different colors.
In the daytime, it's a more reddish brick?
It's gonna be a more reddish brick closer to some of the, some of the brick that's.
On Commerce.
On Commerce Street, yeah. But maybe a little different.
At some point, could you bring in actual samples so?
Yeah, we're supposed to, that was supposed to show up tonight, but it didn't, it didn't make it.
Yeah, we'll have it for the public hearing.
Yeah.
And you have, you're gonna bring in the three bricks, right? Cause there's.
Right, that's, that sample that you saw.
Right, the two reds and then there's a much more earth color, browner one.
Right.
I think it's important to have both of those.
Yep.
Well, I gotta tell you, if that, those renderings do it any justice, that's gonna be a game changer.
That is a game changer.
Absolutely beautiful.
Absolutely.
It makes sense, cause when you look at the, the nighttime picture, the brick looks so much darker than it does in the daytime.
Right.
And one of my, my things was there's so many red brick buildings on Commerce that something, you know, but if you're saying it's. It's, it's more reddish, I think that, that, that fits in line more with what Commerce, just, just what you just said.
Well, I think you've, you've worked towards what the direction was we gave you last time, which was to, to try to simplify the palette of materials. And I think you've done that. And after our last meeting, I kept thinking about something that I learned when I was studying architecture, which was. Was kind of a, a rule, like if you couldn't make it really good, it's, the saying was, if you can't make it good, make it big. And if you can't make it gig, big, paint it red. And you guys didn't have to paint it red. You, you made it good to start with, so you didn't have to do other. The theory behind that saying is to, you know, if you can't reach a good design solution, you kinda mask it by doing other things and you don't have to do that. I think you've gone towards a simpler palette and kept the, the good parts of a very strong design, so.
And, and as I said, we almost kinda circled back to what was, what it was originally to look like, except we've eliminated the stucco now.
Right.
And made the, the brick more prom.
I was fearful that you were gonna make it look like a Fairfield Inn or something like that with.
That's what we were trying to avoid and I know the stucco does that, you know.
It does, it automatically puts you in that vocabulary that you don't wanna be in. It does, it automatically puts you in that vocabulary that you don't wanna be in. And this is a chance for a very significant building in Yorktown.
Yep.
So.
Uh, we, and we'd love to have all your feedback, cause we, you know, I think, we, I, my desire is for this pl- board to really own this project, you know, in, in, in a way, you know, really be something that is your legacy and be very proud of that. So, uh, your feedback is more than welcome, uh, on it, so.
Well, I think you've gone through, you know, and I, we, we asked to see the different variations, cause that came up last time too. I think that's, I think you've done everything that's been asked and it's, that is absolutely gorgeous.
Let's see what the public says.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I think we've gone in the right direction so far.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, uh, we're ready to go on the tenth.
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
Just to, yeah, just have a couple last things. I know you're working on the lighting plan, so I'm sure you'll finalize that.
Yes, we're, um, I had a, uh, a call with the lighting consultant today to kinda get those last few things we talked about, that you and I talked about, done. And, uh, and, um, we're working on the SWIP, which will be a, a draft SWIP, but we'll have that, we, we'll have that in time for the public hearing.
Okay. And I've had a short conversation with the historical, historic consultant. So, uh, we may see if it's a help to the board to engage them in this, but I wanna talk with them a little bit.
Yeah.
But if you don't mind, I'll.
Oh, absolutely.
Move forward as far as I can with that before.
Okay.
Before, you know, and give you some good information on that, and I mentioned it to Michael and Joe before about that, so.
You know, with your engagements with the, the Westchester Group, are there any other towns or villages that have a his- historical consultant?
Uh, I believe, I, I can't answer that definitively, I think there are.
Dobbs Ferry does.
Dobbs Ferry does, yes, there's some of the river towns, and I think Irvington might.
Irvington, I think.
They, and, uh, they ha- have really good design, uh, guideline booklets that they've made up, geared towards their historic architecture. Um, Ossining, I think, also does. I don't know if they have a on-board consultant like we do, but some of them do, not, not, not the majority.
Well, I think, you know, on, on this project, you know, it, it, it pays significant homage to the past in its architectural treatment and, uh, as, uh, Mr. Garrigan said, it also kinda sets the tone for what you're looking for in the future. But I think it does, it, it's a really nice bridge project and, uh, you know, it's a shame to see some of the old Yorktown buildings go, but that building has been, unfortunately, the one that's been there is not really adequate for much of anything at this point. We don't think that's, on the balance sheet, it's not, uh, not a great loss when you, this is on the other side of the balance.
Understood. All right, so just make sure you work on crossing the team and dotting the i's with John and Robin.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, just one other, one other thing I just wanted to just mention to you that I, this, this plan, uh, this, this view reflects, Abigail's, uh, landscape plan, so it's true to that, to that plan. So what you see as far as plantings goes, it's true to that.
And I know we saw her work at the, uh, the Lowe's and in the front there and.
Yep. Which is great stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Really, really good at the trade there, no question.
Okay.
Right?
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, next and last, we have the Underhill Farm Project. This is a discussion of project review, locations three, seven, zero, Underhill Avenue.
Good afternoon.
Counselor.
Sorry, good evening, good evening everyone. Uh, so, once again, we're back here, um, in front of you, we've had some significant work, work done after our, um, roundtable discussion that we, um, that was very helpful that we had here in this, in this room a few weeks ago. We are going to, I believe we're getting an update from, uh, Mr. Steve Marino as it relates to the questions that were raised to the, uh, delineation of the white, of the wetlands and new information relating to that.
Good evening, once again, Steve Marino, Tim Miller Associates. I'm here tonight for, to update you on, um, the issue of the wetlands on the property as well as, uh, the tree survey, the tree code, and how we are, you know, working towards, um, meeting the intent of the tree code. Uh, we'll start with the wetlands, Joe, do we have a? I mean, I mean, yeah, that's probably helpful. Uh, as far as the wetlands go, for starters, uh, the town's consultant has been to the site. I walked the property with her a few weeks back, um, and we did just recently receive a comment letter from them, uh, confirming the delineation as expanded when she and I walked the site. There was a portion of Wetland C, which is the small pocket in the center of the, kinda where the three wetlands are located on the east, on the eastern, western part of the site. Uh, we did expand that somewhat, uh, based on standing water and some vegetation we identified in that area. It remains our, um, opinion and, you know, we will be discussing this more in, in written form as we move forward, uh, that these are in fact wetlands that were created by the construction of the access road to Beaver Ridge. Um, we did walk the site as well on Saturday with the conservation board. Um, and as we walked the site, you could see the areas where material that had been excavated from that western side of the access road still exists in piles on the eastern side of the access road. So, judge, just considering how runoff comes down from Glen Rock through the property and is now trapped by that access road, wetlands that meet the town definition have formed over the past thirty to forty years. So we do acknowledge that they exist. As I said, we, uh, expanded the Wetland C based on the consultant's, um, review of the property. And that is currently, that's shown on, on what will be the current, uh, site plans. Sorry, Joe?
Yes. That area right there.
Uh, the plans have been revised and I think the consultant, it's my understanding consultant has seen that revised plan and is, uh, has confirmed that that's accurate based on, on our site visit. She also did have one comment about the, um, where Wetland A, which is the water course that comes down from Glen Rock, flows through the site, um, crosses under the access road and eventually into the pond. Uh, she was, uh, just concerned that we closed that wetland loop, so to speak, at the road, um, just to make it clear as to where the, the final boundaries of that wetland are. They initiate from that fifteen inch culvert underneath Glen Rock, um, and then go a little bit south and west, and south and north of that. So we will update the, uh, the, the final survey to show, uh, that as a closed wetland line, uh, originating at that fifteen inch culvert. As far as development goes, and, and we are still proposing to fill Wetlands B and C. Um, they are relatively small, even with the expansion of the Wetland C, I think Wetland C is at about four thousand square feet now. Wetland B is somewhere under two thousand square feet. So they are very small wetlands and are, um, isolated from the wetland as it forms at Wetland A, the water course that flows down into the pond. So they're just really two separate wet holes on that side of the, on the western side of that access road.
Steve, can, can you go a little, a little into the wetlands' quality and function?
Sure. Um, we have described that in our drafting, uh, material that we've, uh, submitted to date. Um, I will be providing, based on the consultant's comments, I will be providing a little bit more detail in terms of soils and vegetation. The soils in those two, particularly in those two wetland pockets, B and C, are, um, dense compacted subsoils, like you would see if you had, um, a, a nice soil profile where the top six to twelve inches is scraped off, um, and then deposited somewhere else and you're left with that dense compacted layer underneath it. Um, so it's a very low nutrient soil, so the vegetation in that area is, is really a mix of weedy species and, and, um, low quality transitional wetland type species that are growing there. But there are no trees growing there, no wetland shrubs growing there. Um, there's only some assorted grasses that have, um, adapted to, uh, that standing water situation in those wetlands.
And, and no possibility of, of vernal pool?
No, no, no possibility of vernal pool, they do dry out in the summertime, but it's not, um, the kind of, um, hydrology in that area that would, um, support the type of vernal pool species, amphibians particularly. It does dry out, uh, again, it's not a high nutrient, amphibians generally need a high nutrient kind of, um, substrate in a, in a wetland in order for it to be a vernal breeding pool, and this does not have that. As it's developed over the years.
That supports the contention that the wetlands were created by impoundment, by virtue of the emergency road.
Right. Yes. Yes, it does, yes. Again, um, when you're out there, you actually see the piles of, of material that were removed from these areas. Uh, Wetland B, in fact, the, for one that's a little bit further to the north, is an actual shallow, is an actual pond, surrounded by material that's been excavated out of the pond, uh, to create a berm around it. So, uh, I'd be happy, if any of the planning board members have questions about that, I'd be happy to, to walk it with them. We did walk with the conservation board and they were clearly, um, understood that part of the, uh, uh, of how those wetlands were created. There will, there are still.
Was that created as a fire pond, or was it just?
I think it was just, you know, that, that road was not built to any kind of a high standard, it was really an emergency road just to get in and out if necessary, it certainly could not be used as that at this point, because it's saturated with runoff coming down that hill. And I think it was just done quickly and it was done rather carelessly just to get something in there to, to meet the, the requirement of having an access road, an emergency access there. Again, the fact that they left the piles of, of soil all around on the western side of that, um, is kinda evidence to me that they really, were just trying to get something in there. The two gates that access that access road are still on Underhill, you notice them as you go by, they.
So, when was this road built?
Uh, when was that, it was probably in the late eighties? Late eighties.
So, when that road was built, that hole was dug and it's been like that ever since?
Yeah, it's just a pond, yeah.
Piles of material next to it.
Yeah, with piles of material next to it, yeah. Again, it's very low nutrient stuff too, even those piles of material, there aren't trees grow, generally when you have, if you have good soil and you pile it next to a, a wet area, vegetation will start to grow in it. But these, again, are just not, if you look, and if we go back to the aerials that we had provided earlier, you can see on some of those earlier aerial, aerials, that that was a, um, a cleared, a maintained agricultural field. And, you know, all the way down from Glen Rock down to, um, the more developed part of the property, you can see it's all the same. It's con- consistently dry area. It wasn't until that, um, until that road was built in that this started to happen. And I think the, uh, the town's consultant kind of confirmed that as well, just based on her review of the, uh, of the aerials and, and our site walk. Wetland A, which is the one that comes down under Glen Rock, discharge onto the property, kind of heads north and then makes a quick right turn to go east, eventually working its way through the woods and into the pond. Again, what we're showing now is, um, and I should go back, back one step to show what the wetland consultant also identified. There is a, a, a ditch, a channel, that goes more from the, the stream of Wetland A, and you can see it there, right there, Joe's pointing to it. It's a swell, we, we've identified that as probably what was shown on the older aerials as the water course that came in from the corner of Glen Rock and Underhill and did actually move water that came in from across the way onto the site. But then when, um, site improvements were made, when that road was done, there was a channel picking up that fifteen inch culvert under Glen Rock, now diverts all that water directly onto the property and that channel has been essentially dried out, it's still.
I don't agree with that. I saw that running a couple of weeks ago. So it's gotta be included in your wetland.
Oh, it is, it is, and we, and the consultant, the consultant and I took a close look at it when we were out there and it's now shown as being regulated wetland, regulated water course. On the property, yeah, no, we're not denying its existence. Yeah, it's right there, we, yeah, we, in the field, we located a couple of trees that were tagged, used that as a, um, as a barometer for the point where the, that water course started and it, uh, it does flow. It does flow seasonally, um, most of the time, from my experience on the site, probably eight to nine months out of the year, it's dry. But right now, we're in the wet season and, uh, it's flowing right now, no doubt. So I think that's the update as far as the wetlands go, like I say, the co- the town's consultant has been out there, she's reviewed the final mapping as we've shown it. And other than that one comment about what we need to do at, uh, at the beginning of Wetland A through the culvert under Glen Rock, she's okay with the delineation as we're showing it. Uh, she did have comments about functional, functionality, like I said, we've addressed much of that in the documents we've provided to date, we will go into some more detail, A, on the formation of those wetlands, particularly B and C. We'll provide a little bit more detail on that, so that, you know, everybody's clear as to, you know, what, what that is and how it formed. And, and we will also, um, hmm, there was another thing. Anyway, we're, oh, and, and the function of those wetlands and how they function, how the whole system works together if it does. And we'll, we'll provide more information in, in anticipation of our meetings in April, so we'll have those done in time for that.
One, one quick question, uh, the major pond. The outlet of that.
Yes.
Can you describe where it is and where it's going?
Drag that down, Joe. The outlet is on the northern end of the pond. There's an, the original stone culvert that outlets the pond, there's an opening in the stone. As you recall, the whole northern side of that pond is wrapped with cut stone. Uh, it's actually a very, very attractive feature on the property. And at one point there, in the, in the north, northernmost part of the pond, there's an opening in that, which over, which, which is where the pond overflows down into a culvert. That culvert immediately drops, based on my observations, about twelve feet down and then flows under the site to the north. Uh, we don't know exactly where it's located, um, just to the north of that, there's those, a couple of the outbuildings, one is the studio building that's on the property. Just north of that is a retaining wall where it drops down about eight feet and that culvert is still somewhere down below that retaining wall. So, we know it goes down, it's cut stone, it's a beautiful structure when you look at it and you stick your head in there, it's beautifully done. Whoever did it, whenever they did it, they did a really nice job. But it, again, it's about a twelve foot drop and it flows to the north, we know it gets onto the Beaver Ridge property at some point, but we don't really know precisely where all that water ends up.
Okay, and so, is it cut stone, the la- its lateral movement through the site, is that cut stone to your belief? Just curious.
I'm, I'm sorry, John.
It, is the, is the culvert itself that moves from the twelve foot drop off-site, was that constructed of cut stone, or you, you're not certain of that?
Well, all, all you can see is that first fifteen to twenty feet when you look down in the hole and that's all cut stone. It's lined top and bottom with stone, with cut stone.
And you're, you have an exact, you will have an exact location of it at some point, right?
Of the, of the, of the outlet?
Yeah.
It should be.
That's shown on the plans, I think.
Well, the, I'm, I'm talking about the culvert and where it's located and where it's heading to. Cause you're gonna preserve that, right?
Yes, that's being preserved, absolutely.
So in order to do that, you need to know exactly where it is?
Okay. That's one thing we've talked about a couple of times, is actually doing a dye test at that outlet.
Okay.
So we can see where the go- water goes from there. There's a, a pond on the Beaver Ridge property, it's a stormwater pond, and there is a, a, a large pipe that enters that pond and has, carries flow. We're assuming that that's probably the water that eventually, whatever they did when they built Beaver Ridge and what happened to that culvert at that point, it looks like it's been diverted into that pond, so we are gonna do a dye test to see where it gets to that point and then when it outlets that pond, where it goes once it goes under one eighteen. Cause at that point, it gets to just north of, just west of Allen, it goes, it through a culvert underneath one eighteen and then it, and it goes somewhere to the, towards Front Street, you know.
Yeah, it, it either breaks, um, and dumps out behind the post office, goes through the center of town.
Yeah.
Or it, or it dumps and out back here somewhere.
I, I guess, yeah, I.
So we have, we have, the only way we're gonna find out is to do a dye test.
Right. As far as preserving the flow as it is in that culvert that's underground, I don't believe there's anything in our grading plan or construction plans that would require any messing with that.
Okay, so, the, the important part for you is from the outlet to the edge of your property.
To the Beaver Ridge line.
And you need to know that exact location, so you're not, is it, putting anything on top of it or compromising the structure at all, right?
We'll have to figure out where that is, yeah.
I have a question on the, the emergency access road that you referred to. Were there any permits in nineteen eighty or whatever that would have reflected when that got built and how it got built?
Do we have the original?
Beaver Ridge, probably.
Oh, we have the original site plan approval for Beaver Ridge.
This is offsite for them though, so I don't know if.
It's built for them though, it's, it's, uh, fire access.
Right, so who? Did somebody pull a permit and?
There is an easement. There is an easement through the property, the the access road itself doesn't actually follow the easement, but there is an easement on the property for this.
The intent was to follow that, but but I would think at some point, somebody sought approval from somebody somehow or someplace.
The best I could piece together is that when Beaver Ridge was approved, they needed an alternate access for emergency vehicles.
Right.
And they probably sought and got a an easement through this property and built that.
Right, well, it was the subject of a subdivision, so it probably was in common ownership at that moment and.
So there you go.
That that would be my guess.
Beaver Ridge was part of this.
No, but I'm concerned about the the need to maintain it or the the need to abandon it or all of the above.
We're going to.
It's going away, but you're gonna have another connection.
You're gonna replace it with a better connection, but.
Correct, we are, we are going to replace it with this connection right here.
And that that will.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is that the the creation of it, even if it was a temporary, on a temporary basis for forty years. It it impacted the wetlands that we're now looking at today without perhaps any approvals or somebody didn't even follow the easement. So it was done in a very random fashion, I'm just.
Other than that stream, yeah, there's no indication based on what we've looked at that that those wetlands were there before that road was out. Other than the stream that we knew come came down the hill and eventually entered the pond, we haven't found any indication that those wetlands were there. And I think that um the letter from the consultant kind of, she sort of agreed with that, she's saying it's not implausible that that's how the how the wetland was created. So that's where we are with the wetlands, other than uh the consultant also mentioned the possibility of Army Corps involvement, depending on what we're doing. We had originally indicated in our submissions that Army Corps might be involved if we were to go through the process of diverting the stream at wetland A. Cause at one point, we had talked about having more construction down in that southwest corner. Um and that would have required that stream to be relocated further to the north in order to continue the flow through there. But the those buildings have been scaled back and the channel will remain in its existing location. So we we don't anticipate we'll need any Army Corps approval for that. Army Corps, in my opinion, won't regulate wetlands B and C, they're too small and they're isolated. We will likely touch base with the Army Corps just to kind of see if we can get some confirmation of that. But there's currently one person handling seven counties uh at the Army Corps of Engineers, so it's and his repeated request to me is if you don't think you're filling in regulated wetlands, please don't call me. And, you know, we'll we'll provide all the all the deep, all the data we need to prove that that our wetland is um is not regulated by the Corps. And we will submit something to him at 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 some date in the near future, just to to cover that base. But they are not clearly connected to the existing wetland A, which would be the requirement for the Corps to uh to regulate that.
Are you going to um, you'll be submitting some additional information on the mitigation plan that's proposed?
Yes, thank you for reminding me of that. Also, at the request of the consultant, although we knew that this was coming, we have a conceptual mitigation plan right now. As we finalize and start detailing the engineering that goes into the creation of and expansion of the wetland as we're as we see it. The wetland mitigation plan will be much more detailed than what than what we've submitted so far. And it will go into how we're using that mitigation plan to replicate the functions that are being lost to the two uh wetland areas that are that are being disturbed.
And you will address the issues that are raised by our code in terms of avoidance and and that, all that kind of stuff, right?
Yep. Yep.
Any other kind of questions about the wetlands?
Okay, so then from there, we'll jump to trees. Uh John and I had a productive discussion the other day so that I was clear, more clear than I have been in the past. On the town code and um some of the unique qualities of the town code as it relates to trees. And some potential for contradiction in the code, which I think John straightened me out on a couple of things and I think we sorted out um some aspects of the code. So one thing we've done most recently is, as you recall, as part of the the original survey, seven hundred and three trees were located on on the property. All eight inches or greater in diameter and there is a list. The tree list, uh and there is a list, a detailed list in the in the plan set showing the size and uh future. Size and the future turnout for those for those particular trees. The green trees are being preserved, the red trees are being cut, that's, thank you, Joe, as part of the uh current proposal. Um one thing that we did miss when we started looking at that list is that maple trees are listed as maple trees. But and and we didn't do the original tree survey, uh that was done by another entity, and they just listed maple trees as maple trees. However, there are at least four maple, four species of maple trees that are very common to the area. And there is a difference between maple trees as to ones that are more more sensitive to being preserved as as opposed to ones that aren't. The tree code specifically lists um a reference for invasive and non-native tree species. That should actually in fact be removed from a site as part of a mitigation plan. So we have gone back to uh the tree list, I've started the process of updating the maple trees particularly. In term, in terms of more, better clo- closer to species. Uh because on the site, we have Norway maples, we have sugar maples, we have Japanese maples, we have red maples. Um there might be some um mountain maple out there and some other um. Silver maples, box elder is another maple species. I haven't seen any box elder and I haven't seen any silver maple, but there are at least four species of of maple trees out there. So we did go out, I I have been out in the area, particularly around the house and the pond. Um and I've identified already forty-five Norway maples as species that really as part of the mitigation plan should come out. Norway maple is a non-native invasive species, it has a a particular characteristic that there are chemicals in the roots of the tree that keep other trees from becoming established. So that you get a monoculture of of Norway maple, it's a very good tree in in highly urban settings because it's nearly indestructible. Growing up on Long Island, there were Norway maples on every block because they would grow right out of asphalt essentially. But uh in a site like this, Norway maple is one of the species you'd want to uh eliminate if possible. So we have identified forty-five Norway maples as well as twenty-three black locusts, which is another species that's on that list of trees that are recommended to be removed. And that's just from, the the black locusts, I think we have pretty well identified on the site. But there are still a hundred and ten maple trees shown as being removed um that have not been identified to species yet. So I need to go back out there and see if there are any more Norway maples. Because essentially the code um lists a protected species, a protected tree as part of the code. As a no- as native species and certain numbers, certain types of species on the site. We are at seven hundred and three trees, we need to know how many of those seven hundred and three threes, three trees aren't actually protected under the code. So that we all have the same numbers that we're working with. As of right now, like I said, we've identified forty-five Norway maple and twenty-three black locusts. So as part of our mitigation plan, those will be removed. At this time, from seven hundred and three trees, we're we're at five hundred and ninety-four actually protected trees on the property. So we've gone from seven hundred and three to five hundred and ninety-four just based on that. Of that five hundred and ninety-four trees, we're showing a hundred and eighty-six trees as being preserved on the property, all eight inches and greater. For a total of uh four hundred and eight trees will be cut down. So our original count was at five hundred and twenty-three trees. We've whittled that down based on on invasive and non-native species. We had, uh like I said, we had a discussion with the conservation board, walked the site on Saturday. Following that meeting, Joe and I um talked to Mr. Golaro and we are also going to look at some of the perimeter areas of the site, some of the areas of the site that are not. Experiencing quite as much cut fill disturbance and where there are some other trees that can be I can be preserved on the site that are currently being shown as being cut down. And so far, I've identified twenty-five tree, additional trees, several of which are along the one eighteen side of the property. Uh these are large trees too, sugar maples and and black walnuts primarily. That it looks like with a slight adjustment to the parking area, slight adjustment to grading, we may be able to save some of these larger trees. Uh in the area of the pond as well, there's a part of the northern edge of the pond there where we're showing a number of trees that's coming down. When taking a closer look, it looks like we're actually out of this, out of the disturbance area there and maybe able to save save those trees as well. So we have at this point, twenty-five additional trees that we think can be saved on the property. And uh we'll take a closer look at some of the grading and limits of disturbance and see if there aren't any more, particularly of the larger specimen trees that that we could save uh as we move forward. So like I say, we're, so we're.
I was gonna say, that's a very positive move, I think, along one eighteen. A lot of those trees, when I was looking at them the other day, they look in not great shape. A lot of them are either broken or.
Along one eighteen particularly, there are three large black walnuts, beautiful trees. And if and if you really need to cut them down, I'll take the wood because you can build a heck of anything out of a black walnut. But we, so we're trying to preserve those three black walnuts, um there's a couple of large spruce trees there, they're in in pretty good shape as well. There's also a number of thirty to thirty-six inch Norway maple, which again, keep other trees from kind of, and if we try planting uh as part of a landscape plan, additional trees along that edge. If the Norway maples are there, it's likely that they're not gonna, that these other trees aren't gonna survive. So uh those we will be continuing to propose to remove. But again, we're looking very closely at this, at the at the limits of disturbance in the grading plan to see if there's anything else particularly, you know, like I say, in the larger sized tree that we can't. Or or more unique trees, there are a couple of basswoods on the tree, on the on the property which are not common trees and if we can save them, we will. And I I brought this up at previ- previous meetings, about a hundred and eighty of the trees that we're cutting down are aspens or cottonwoods. And aspens or cottonwoods, although they're native species, they're also nuisance species, they grow very quickly, they splinter and break and 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 fall down very quickly, they have shallow root systems. They, you know, they grow quickly in in low nutrient soils and then they prevent other more desirable species from getting in there. So that's, although they're not listed as an as an invasive species, in my experience, they're one of the less desirable species. And yes, they are coming out and they are trees and we'll replace them. So as part of that, up to to this point, and we're still only working off a conceptual landscape and wetland mitigation plan. But up to this point, we're planting three hundred and thirty-six new trees, so we're at four hundred and eight protected trees being cut. We have three hundred and thirty-six new trees going in so far. And again, we'll be looking, as the engineering now really proceeds, uh we'll be looking at where else we can get some more trees in and and, you know, all native species obviously. So we're working towards that. So just to sum up, because as you know, I can go, I'd be able to go on for a long time if you let me. So we have um part of our mitigation plan then, we are replanting three hundred and thirty-six trees at a minimum. We are cutting down a hundred and ten or so non-natives um that the code allows as being something that's actually desirable in in an overall plan is to cut some of these non-native invasive species out. And uh we are looking at what kind of numbers we end up with when the plan is finalized. And we'll then, you know, look at the part of the code that says you need to buy a certain number of trees based on what the code says in order to finish that kind of mitigation for the overall um plan for the for the property. So we're looking at all that stuff, we will, again, like the wetlands, we'll have more information in advance of the uh of the next meeting. Uh but I did want to bring you up to date and not bore you to death at this point um with where we are with the trees and wetlands, so thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to talk about the parking a little bit, I know there's some questions have been brought up about the parking. The townhomes and the condominiums uh stand on their own as far as parking, they 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 have adequate parking uh for for those units. And looking at the area around the new condominium, I mean, I'm sorry, the new apartment building and the existing building. Which is this area in here, the graphics aren't even very good, so I'm just gonna expand on that. So this parking uh around the apartment building and the existing Underhill House. And what we're proposing as far as parking is concerned, based on our proposal. We need one hundred and ninety-four spaces. And that's based on um the overlay. Code asks for one point five parking spaces per dwelling unit, which we're providing. Uh one space for every four hundred square feet for uh commercial space other than the restaurant. And then the restaurant uh space, which we have a small restaurant space shown in the uh the existing building, which, you know, may or may not come out at at the end of the day on this project. But that requires one space for every fifty square feet of patron space and then one uh one per per hundred for prep area. So we just took the whole thousand square feet as one per fifty. But based on that, one hundred and ninety-four spaces are are what's required. We're showing the aggregate of the of the parking spaces in that area is a hundred and eighty-two spaces, so we're shy twelve spaces, which puts us well within the twenty-five percent. That the that the parking code allows the the planning board to vary. With that said, we do have uh area available if necessary to to put an additional twenty plus spaces. And that area would be uh. That area would be here adjacent to these spaces across from the condominium and in this area between the condominium and the apartment building. So we can easily be whole as far as parking is is concerned, it's and it's up to the board's discretion to determine whether they want that what, that much parking on uh on this, on the uh project or not. But again, we're about seven percent under when you take the aggregate of the parking around that building. Which is again, well within the twenty-five percent you're allowed to vary for overlapping, non-conflicting uses.
What would the difference be, you said you took the entire area at one per fifty? For the service, service portions, what would the difference be if you did a true?
We probably, it'd probably be one more, one more space.
Okay, so it's not significant.
It's not, it's not gonna be, you know, yeah.
What about the proposed uh rec building on the neighboring property?
Yeah, there's, there's no parking specifically dedicated for that and we're just assuming people are gonna walk to and use the facility. Um it's it's that that's meant for the condominium and the townhouses. There is, there are par- extra part, there are extra parking spaces available there if necessary um that are open to anyone's use.
Can you scroll up or move up to that area, please?
What do you, what do you want me to do?
Go to the area.
Towards Beaver Ridge.
Yes.
Up towards Beaver Ridge?
Yeah.
Right there. So, yeah, so let's talk about that, so that that number that I gave I gave you, that built into that number are the twenty-five plus spaces that are gonna be dedicated to Beaver Ridge. So we feel that there's not gonna be a conflict there between those spaces and and the tenants in the apartment building. Because they're not gonna be using it on the weekends, it's gonna be dedicated time slots and there'll probably be signage up uh to make sure that that those spaces are available during that time.
During which time?
Whatever time that the senior center, that they would be dedicated to the senior center.
So do we know how many square foot that building's gonna be?
I do, but not off the top of my head, it's not a very big building, yeah, it's three to four, three to four thousand, something like that.
And it's gonna be partially recreational offices?
Yes.
And partially senior center?
Correct.
And the recreational offices, they're not gonna have events there, but the senior facility, I imagine they would.
Yes. It's not um, it's not very large, it's it will be a, you know, a decent sized space, but it's it's not what you might think of in terms of events. It's it's about half and half, so.
And is any of the parking on Beaver Ridge gonna be dedicated for that building?
No.
So all the parking's on the neighboring property?
To my knowledge, that's correct.
Right? Thank you.
Okay, have any other questions for me?
Are you done, done?
Yeah, that's that's it, unless you have anything else you wanna ask.
So I do want to touch on, I know your consultant isn't isn't here, but it's. but at some point, I think it would be a good idea to get your consultant and our consultant at a meeting to talk about the traffic and the report.
We were expecting that, I believe.
We had a very productive meeting with, um, town staff, members of the DOT. We're working with the town consultant. We're waiting on a report from them. And on April tenth, we're coming back to this board and having a meeting with your consultant and our consultant.
All right, so on the tenth of April, we'll be back here.
Correct. And it's a traffic specific, um, there may be other issues that evening, but traffic is gonna be delved into very intensely, very specifically.
I hope so. Okay. Thank you. Miss anything, John?
Sorry, one more. So in, in, in line with the suggestions earlier about carving out special meetings, we're, we'll be back on the twelfth as well to either continue that traffic discussion or to go into other topics. We're calling a special, well, not we, but the town has agreed to, to, we are requesting that we have a special meeting to follow up from the tenth, so that.
There's the word.
Right. Humbly, humbly, respectfully requesting.
So at this point, are.
That's a Wednesday.
On the tenth?
Tenth, we're meeting, we're requesting a meeting on the twelfth, an additional meeting, a special meeting on the twelfth.
So at this point, are you requesting a meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, we get time and a half.
Time and a half. I just negotiated.
We get time and a half.
Yeah, I'm approving it.
I'd like to get time.
Settle for half.
So what's the thoughts on the board and having a additional meeting on, uh, Wednesday, the twelfth?
I'm fine with that.
And, and just the purpose of that meeting and the, what, what you hope to do at that point?
Well, we are continuing, as you can see, we're doing a lot of work on the outstanding items with a lot being accomplished that also is bringing up other work that has to be done. So on the tenth, we are focusing on traffic and we want to use the twelfth to continue that discussion if necessary, to continue the wetland discussion a- as we're moving forward, to continue the, the tree discussion. We're just trying to continue this great momentum that we have now.
So let me ask you, on the twelfth, we're gonna be talking specifically about traffic?
No, tenth.
Tenth. Are you gonna be prepared? Is everything gonna be, 'cause a lot of work to do.
Yes.
You're gonna be ready for that meeting on the tenth?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Okay, we're certain.
We're close now, yes.
All right, so we'll have our consultant here, their consultant.
Transpo.
Transpo, yes.
I will, uh, ask him, ask him to come.
Okay. Please. Thank you. All right, so in reference to the twelfth.
Make a motion.
Someone's gonna have to get me a, a, a release from Greenberg that night. All right.
Oh, yeah.
All right, do we take a vote or we just?
Take, yeah, we'll take a vote.
All right, so in reference to adding a special meeting for the Underhill project on April twelfth, do I have a motion?
Motion. Second?
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a work session meeting, correct?
Work session.
Okay.
Yes.
One more comment on the additional meetings. Don't forget, we have the historical component, the historical, cultural component. That's gonna be, uh, a part of that, that discussion as well.
Get it rolling.
At the twelfth.
So.
Sorry, go ahead.
I just have a couple of comments in, in general. When we met on March eighth, a number of boards and representatives of different agencies in the town made comments and sub- and, and gave us information and took positions on certain things, which I don't see reflected anywhere in our record right now, okay? And I would hope that at some point we could get that information, you know, out there in the public. And I wondered why a more rec, more of a record wasn't kept on that, on that, that particular evening. I mean, it was a planning board meeting, even though a lot of other agencies, uh, participated in it. But I don't see the recreation commissions, you know, the gist of their comments wasn't reflected in our minutes. And I would like to see that as we go forward so that we have an adequate record of whatever, you know, we do as we go on. And I think that those issues that were raised on the eighth need to be addressed as well. I understand that there are differences in the importance on some of these things in your minds, but I think in order for us to have a complete picture and, and a record, again, I think these things need to be addressed. What, in my mind, going forward the way we are is a substitute for declaring a positive declaration on this project and using the EIS method. But I think so far, we've all said to ourselves as a board that we wanna do the same level of analysis and study that would be required if we were doing that process. So I don't wanna lose any of those issues because if we make a decision one way or the other, I always want these decisions to stand and not to be challenged later on. So I think the environmental record, uh, you know, the review has to incorporate all of the things that we would have done if we went the EIS route. Uh, I think that was our understanding when we embarked upon that direction rather than the EIS. And as our town attorney reminds us, we didn't make that decision yet, right?
Correct.
But, you know, sometimes I say to myself, maybe that's the best way to do this because the housing question has to be analyzed. What is the best way to meet the housing needs of our community, of seniors, of young people? Are we meeting that, okay? Are there different price points that need to go into a project like this? Ken Belfer and his memo pointed out to us that SEACR requires that kind of analysis. And the town law, uh, has that in there, going way back to the eighties when these things were first set up. So I, I wanna make sure that not only do we hear from you, but as a board, we have the ability to discuss this thing, these, these points and to make findings as we go. And then we say, all right, we have, we've dealt with this issue fully, we've made some findings on it, we can set it aside, move on to the next one. And then just kind of mirror the process that we would be going through the, the other way.
Well, I think fortunately for this, for, to your comment, for example, the, um, the recreation committee comments is, is a perfect, uh, example. Their comments, though it was a comment made at a public meeting, are actually a reflection of what your code requires. So we have to address that. If they were here that evening or not, we'd still be addressing that comment related to the recreational fee and how we're impacted by the code.
Right.
And as it goes to, for example, that, the housing, uh, you, the detail you just mentioned, the price point of the housing question, that is part of our fiscal analysis. That's, we use that when we're coming up with our, our tax analysis, when we're showing projected analysis. So I think, I, I hear what you're saying and I'm not worried that we're gonna miss that because if it's not caught by your code, it is caught by SEACR. But I, I appreciate what you're saying in terms of the detail, but I'm confident we're gonna come back as we're going. I just think it's an overwhelming amount of information, so we can't do it all at one meeting. But I believe at the end of this process, we are gonna satisfy your concern that we're not missing anything.
Aaron, wouldn't the issues that were raised or discussed at the March eighth meeting be captured in correspondence from those boards? I mean, Abaca provided a great memo that detailed a number of the things I think that were discussed that night.
Yeah, we got, we got some.
So is it, so are you suggesting that's what's missing is minutes from that meeting?
I think so.
So is that something that's possible? Could we recreate?
We, we can, we can.
Transcript?
Minutes were, minutes were taken. We can get that. We can also get the transcript of the meeting if you care.
Right. Right. But I would think most of those issues that were raised.
I thought it was our meeting, honestly.
It was ours.
But they should be captured in the correspondence that we're getting from those various.
Yeah, we didn't get it from everybody, that's all.
And it's on.
Well, that, that, we should.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, as a backstop, there's the recording.
Tom, Tom will do the minutes.
We can go to that section of the law now, the video minutes issue, right? Yeah.
Okay, good point.
That's all I have.
Okay. You have else?
That's it.
I don't, I don't have anything else at this, at present.
Counselor?
Should we take a vote on the twelfth?
We did.
I think we did.
We did, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
We did, yeah. We'll make a motion in a second.
See you.
You're bringing coffee pill.
Yes.
You're bringing the coffee.
We discussed earlier, we do wanna have an advisement of counsel.
A move to go into executive session.
Right. Um, and we will not be returning from that. Uh, it was a letter to the editor that we wanted to discuss.
Yeah.
Right. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Yes, don't move.
Some more seconds.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sean.
Take care.